Good afternoon, I'd like to call the words on the number four Board Supervisor Regular Meeting. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment. Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No more silence? Thank you.
And the chairman wants a motion to adopt two agendas presented.
Thank you, I have a second.
I didn't see any addendum items.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Mr. Watson, your mic. All right, please attention, we have the school report, back to Grimsby.
Good afternoon, we're fans of family. I do have my report up here, but if it's okay, I'm not going to read it because I just got my voice back today. I feel fine, I just, my voice doesn't sound good, but I am fine. I do want to draw your attention to looking ahead to the Veterans Day Assembly. I hope that you'll join us on November 11th. Like breakfast at 10:00 AM followed by the assembly at 11:00 AM featuring this year's theme, "The Legacy of Loyalty in Service." Retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel Nancy Meikle and retired U.S. Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Dr. McQuainer will offer inspiring remarks, while the RCHS Panther Men and the new Rappahannock Community Chorus will perform musical tributes to our hymns. Hopefully this is back before that. I know we also have our latest SIFT infographic available to, so I'll save my voice for any questions you may have.
And I'd be happy to talk through the SIFT infographic.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't notice any of that, an email you were typing as well.
Get anything you want going out?
Just, these graphics are similar to what had been shared in the past, they're just put together in a nice, complete package for us to share with people to help us advocate to the General Assembly as well as to General Assembly members. This graphic I think is very telling. The cap that was placed back in 2007, 2008, the 2007 numbers, has led our, the combination of basic gate and supplemental basic gate to be flat. You can see the blue bars, the basic gate has fluctuated over time, and our supplemental basic gate has kind of been, caused that to be leveled. So last year when the General Assembly did all kinds of great work and made that blue bar grow, we got nothing, extra, because of the cap. Our supplemental just shrunk to offset. And that's really, in a tight nutshell, what we're trying to change is get rid of that red line. I've shared with you the graphics on the back before, but just on a per pupil basis, our funding from the state for operational funding, we are dead last at $2,013 per pupil. This is FY23 from standardized reporting that schools have to make to the state. And then, as far as what the locality contributes, we are, or the five schools that contribute more per pupil than Rappahannock County. And so this is trying to speak to the narrative of all Rappahannock County needs to do is just raise taxes. If you would just contribute more, contribute your fair share, then everything would be just fine. Well, we are contributing our fair share, we pay the sixth highest amount in the state, and oh by the way, it's the state who is absolutely not covering their fair share.
When you said the sixth highest amount as a...
Per pupil basis.
On a per pupil basis.
Yeah, yeah, absolute basis, so maybe this would look totally different, but...
What are we paying, does it work out to like $15,000 per pupil or something like that?
Uh, $15,000, $230, and unfortunately...
I'm sorry, I don't pay attention to school numbers at all.
Yeah, so, you know, you put in $15,000, the state puts in $2, whereas for some other districts, they put in, you know, if not per student.
And so ostensibly, this is our lobbying effort, we'll speak to this. And when do we have an update?
That is very active, there's a lot of behind the scenes work happening, trying to educate our, not our General Assembly members who know us and know our situation, but others who will advocate on our behalf, who are on very important committees, and as well in the Joint Subcommittee on School Finance, there's been a lot of effort placed there as well, so...
And I will say, I'm very impressed with the member-to-member lobbying behind the scenes that are lobbying us and facilitating, which is a great headway in educating folks that probably would not have listened to that otherwise.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I can add that I, Wes Mills and I participated in the strike retreat at the Amistale Fire Hall, and while there, he and I chatted about this, and he said the same thing, he said he was really pleased with the work that you were seeing this person do. So I am, too, I'm anxious to see some formal reports on the fruits of their labor.
Which keeps us very busy as well.
Yeah, and so it is delicate, and so we, the advocacy is happening, and we don't want to get ahead of General Assembly members, and we want to bring them along in a way that's comfortable for them without being overwhelming, so it's, I think it's careful, and Ms. Parker is helping with that.
It is important to note that the public comment that we were able to generate from Rappahannock dated the attention of the Joint Subcommittee, very much so, over half the public comment was from our folks, and that's forcing a deeper dive and a more careful study of our situation for that committee. So that's something we've been hoping to not have been able to pull off.
Excellent.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you so much. And thank you also very much for your card in home.
Sorry.
It was sent once for my stepfather, and I sent the card to my mother in Massachusetts and said, "This small community in Rappahannock County cared enough to do what you all did, it's just very special," so thank you so much.
Really sorry, but...
We appreciate it.
Feel better, Stan? All right, Company Four, Monthly Four.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Dave Bailey, President of Company Four, I'm Dr. Hill, isn't available to be here today. As far as our numbers, this past month for EMS calls, we had 16 calls, eight responses, and two transports. For fire calls, we had, for fire, we had five calls and three responses, and some of the, the percentage wise, that number's down a little bit from previous months, but due to vacations, we had a lot of people traveling this past month. Events at the Firehouse, on the 19th of October, we had a Latin dance, which went interestingly and very well, a lot of people show up, I think just to support the station, it was a lot of fun. On the 2nd of November, we had a hunter's supper, so this past Saturday, and gave away some nice raffles and a ton of good food there. If you want to keep up with future events at the Fire Hall and perhaps participate, flinthillfireva.com, that's our new website. So we're going to have some training tomorrow, the administrators and all to learn to manage that site, but flinthillfireva.com. And then finally, we haven't reported this in the past, but I'm glad that we finally got these numbers together, because I know you all, in particular, have seen the growth of the company over the last year or two, and so this year, we have finally gotten some year-to-date numbers together for volunteer hours, and on the operational slash staffing side of the house, we had so far 1,645 volunteer hours, and then on the administrative and support side, we've had 3,793 volunteer hours for a little over 5,400 volunteer hours for the year. So I think we're about at 40 members, I don't have the member number list here with me, but we're doing great on that front as well. So, barring any questions, that's my presentation. Do you want to go into any details about the Latin dance? If I laugh a little bit, it's because of my Latin talent, or my Latin dance talent, but we did have, we do have someone who knows Latin dance really well, and teaches before every dance, so anyone who's interested, you can come and learn a few steps.
That's great.
Now, we have over 30 people.
Yeah, it was great.
Learn how talented or perhaps untalented you are.
Not the latter, but we're great, right? But, but we have a good time anyway. Lots of good music. All right, thank you very much.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right, moving into Gobain Homes Monthly Courthouse Project Tubking.
All right, we've got Andrew Moore online, and he's on mute, go right to Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Gary. Andrew Moore here at Gobain Homes, and I am in Northbound I-85 right now, so I'm actually going to turn this over to John Spann, who's our partner manager, and he'll give you an update, and as long as, as the cell phone coverage holds up, I'm going to be able to answer questions, but I think John will provide the full presentation, so John, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, since our last, last update, we have been working on the initial concept plans, and we are meeting on Thursday the 7th with the Planning Oversight Committee to present them, do them for the first time. We are studying a freestanding building and also an addition option. Our courts consultant will also be there virtually on the 7th and to update on the program work that she has done, and she will be after following that, scheduling a series of virtual meetings with the different stakeholder groups to confirm her program and her test fit diagrams. Following the POC meeting, we will begin working on elevations and incorporating any comments that came out of the POC meeting, and will be presenting the elevation studies to the POC again on November 21st, around November 21st. And last thing, we have as part of our contract, a digital site model that will be used to create renderings. There was some delay in that due to weather, despite the survey work that we had done, but we do expect to receive the final one, final site model also on November 21st.
And John, Dewberry is out today again, so I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Okay, no. Good. So what I have to say for this one?
I think...
Is there any questions?
I think there was a thought that you might get a sneak peek this meeting, but with the scheduling for the POC was delayed, and so I guess the, the little be unveiled, I haven't seen anything, later this week, and then it will be passed off to the board and publicly, I guess, would be the next board meeting.
Yes, Inspector.
If you have any questions?
So the POC is giving guidance on what we'll see at the next meeting?
They're receiving the input, I don't know, I guess they'll provide immediate feedback, I think that'll mostly be on the program, the aesthetics, I'm sure they'll have opinions, but the aesthetics are largely reserved for the board.
I can jump in for a second.
Yes.
Some things...
You're, you're really choppy, Andrew.
Going downhill.
Yeah.
And of course, one of the most relevant things to discuss is the relative merits of the new standalone building versus the addition renovation option, and we'll be prepared to talk about, prize some of the possibilities we see with the renovation addition scenario, so to be, should we see how that plays a part.
So that conversation will be at the summer meeting?
If not, before. Probably, because of toleration, don't know.
All right. Looking forward to seeing something that we can discuss.
Some of the...
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for the time, and we'll...
Okay. We are going to move now into First Energy's presentation, but you're right, the Sperryville Transmission Line.
Is there one thing I want to say, going forward, if we create somebody from Gobain Homes could be here in person?
Well, we scope for them to do these updates electronically, but there are some dates where they are in person.
Hi, good afternoon, thanks for having us here this afternoon, my name is Dan Tompkins, I'm the Director of Regional Extraordinary Affairs for First Energy, which is our way of saying I am of the team that manages our local government relations across our footprint for the company. I'm with me is Andrew Khan, who is in our DC office for First Energy, and Kyle Reeve from the Van Dischardt East in Richmond. You've got two documents from us, one, Slide Deck One, a fact sheet of the Page-Sperryville Transmission Rebuild Project. There is an existing 138-kilovolt transmission line right now there, this is a rebuild of that line, and it will be a 138-kilovolt transmission line when it is rebuilt, we've done inspections on the line, and it needs a little bit of work on the poles, so that's what this project is. In the deck, you've got a little background on the company, some of you may recall that Tom McEdison had distribution customers in the area for a number of years, they're now served by Rappahannock and Shen Valley co-ops, but we maintained our transmission infrastructure in the valley and the area. So this project is on 28 miles of rebuild from Lorraine over to the substation in Sperryville. Does cross through the park, the existing line, and in the presentation, as you can see, the rebuild is based on the existing conditions of those poles, it is a replacement of existing facilities. We will replace the existing wood facilities with steel monopoles, the expectation of the engineering team right now is that those would be the weatherized monopoles, cognizant of the territory that we're traversing.
You might want to explain what that means.
Sure, so the weatherized, not the galvanized steel poles that are very bright and shiny, but instead the ones that look like the pre-rusted as it, as it appears, that you'll see on the side of the road for the, for the guardrails, right? We have poles like that as well, that are designed to minimize the view shedding effect. There are going to be some minor upgrades of the existing substations, the project though in total is expected to use as much as is practical the existing right-of-way. There may be some engineering needs that have a wobble here or there of a few feet that might require some additional right-of-way, but this is almost exclusively going to be within the existing right-of-way across the entirety of the project. And then, I think, before questions, I just want to do two things. One, if you all have any questions, we wanted to make sure we were here to introduce ourselves as the representatives of the company, should you have any questions, Andrew and I are available for any further information that you will want, and we wanted to set the timeline expectations for you. This project will require the approval of the State Corporation Commission, we will file for that approval in early 2025. That will include public comment periods, the opportunity for questions to be answered, and adjudication by the State Corporation Commission. As part of that process, we are also hosting a public open house in two days' time, excuse me, three days' time, Thursday, in Lorraine, and there will be a virtual option for comments to be submitted as well online.
We did see that there was a large notice placed in the Rappahannock News for that.
Yeah.
And I attached it to this agenda as well.
Great. And Andrew will both be there for that as well, in addition to one of Kyle's colleagues. They'll also have, it's a, it's a station setup, so there'll be folks there to answer questions about project need, about siting, environmental concerns, questions that people may have, and things of that sort, so folks will be able to walk around and get questions answered by subject matter experts working on the project. Also on the fact sheet is contact information for any residents that may have questions, an 800 number and an email address, those are answered pretty promptly by a team of folks who have any public fair evaluation for residents' questions. I'll stop there and see if there are any additional, oh, if I could, this is the first of many opportunities for us to talk about this project. The approval process takes many months, even up to a year, the State Corporation Commission. We're cognizant of transmission projects having heightened sensitivity, particularly in Virginia today, I wanted to make sure you knew who to talk to to ask questions and what this project was and was not. So 138 KV when it started, 138 KV when it ended, it's a rebuild of aged infrastructure.
Excellent, thank you for coming in and giving us this presentation. I have a question, is there capacity upgrade here, or is this just infrastructure?
So because the conductor is newer than the older conductor, there may be some incremental increase in the capacity, but it's 138 KV now, and it'll be 138 KV rated, there may be less line loss, there may be some small incremental increase in capacity, but this is not a capacity increase project, this is an existing infrastructure rebuild.
Got it.
And for the board's benefit, I did reach out to REC earlier, just to confirm my understanding, and that's the Sperryville and Eileen Road substations that serve most of the county, they receive their primary feed from this transmission line, so the power comes over from Page County. They can be backfilled if something interferes with that route from other directions, it takes some time, and we have some outage, and we've seen that in a couple rare instances, but this is the primary source of electricity for citizens in the county.
And the Eileen Road Substation.
Yes, which is all fed from the main spine that runs right through the county.
Thank you for coming all the way from Ohio to talk to us today, and what people will probably want to know is, how impactful will the cutover be when the old line is taken out of use?
Transferred?
Yes, and the new line is transferred in to the general user, will they notice it at all, or will...
They should not.
Okay.
They should not.
It should be seamless.
It should be seamless.
Okay. And then, of course, our area is devoted to view sheds, with the park being such a great neighbor to us, we're always aware of any view shed impacts, it's great that you have materials that seem to be compatible with that. We've had great luck also painting structures in the past and have a shade that works very well, if that is an option as well, but we, we did have an occasion in the past where something was constructed that was an eyesore, and so we really want to avoid that and make sure we get it right, because I know repainting things or doing things over is very expensive.
I drove across from the west today, so I saw exactly the part of the world that this line goes through, and I agree with you completely.
Well, thank you.
You'll have photos of the weatherized steel structures at the open house of those as well, and so those will be available online for books to take a look at.
And if you ever got some extra paint line around there.
If you have any information about, you know, that paint that you used, I'd be happy to pass it along to the project team. My, my guess is that we purchased this specialized equipment, you know, as is, but I'm happy to take the information back to the team.
Yeah, that's wonderful, we would really appreciate your passing that information along, and if it's, if it's a great fit, so much the better.
My only, my only question, and I, I say this respectfully, but you buried your lead a little bit, because you, you talked, hey, it's going to be the same from a, whatever, energy providing...
138 KV.
Thank you.
Sure.
But that slide up there is what matters to us the most.
Sure.
So let's talk about that.
Okay.
Why 20 more feet, or 15 feet, or why is that necessary?
Well, the steel monopoles are replacing wood poles there now, so the infrastructure is going to be more resilient, and that is sort of an industry standard now in terms of construction materials that are used for...
Because there's a range in there, and it says from 65 to 95, so is, are you saying that those monopoles prefab start at 65 feet and go up to 95, and there's no way to stay within the height parameters that currently exist with the wooden pole?
I'd say two things, one, the pole height is determined by the specific geography where the pole is going to be located, and the clearances that are required based on, you know, code that we're required to maintain. I think that there is room for community input on, on how, you know, what places taller poles matter to you, we want to hear that.
Sure.
The engineers will make the appropriate and safe determination of what the right facilities are for the place based on the location and based on that code, but that's certainly input and feedback we want to hear.
Okay, yeah, I mean, have you, have you already met with the superintendent of the National Park about this?
I don't know if we've met with the superintendent, I know we have been in communication with the park already.
Okay, yeah, because I'd really be curious to, to hear from them, because it's, just looking at the, the rough map that's in your presentation, and I'm, I'm up in the park a lot, and I'm just trying to picture where this is, and it looks like it's to the, it's generally to the south of 211, at least in the Rappahannock County portion of the Shenandoah National Park, but I know that there are super popular trailheads that go right, provide access right into that area, so I would think that the park service would have a real interest in limiting any kind of, any...
View shed impact.
Any additional impact, I mean, I know you guys aren't going to bury these things, too late for that, right? So I just hate to see, I just hate to see the height generally go up on all of these unless it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I mean, a couple things, one, I know we've already talked to the park, I'm happy to find out what feedback we've received from them so far and share that with you all, if you're interested, I don't know if we've received anything specific to that, but I can take that question back and find out. As I was driving, one of the things I noticed on this line is that the existing structures are the wooden H-frames, which are...
Oh, yeah.
Much wider than this, right? So there could be some, I don't want to oversell, but there could, right, there could be some reduced view shed impact in some circumstances based on switching to a monopole versus the wider structures.
Yeah. Well, I, I can't even remember seeing the power line, so...
I remember it from Mary's Rock.
If you take the Mary's Rock Trail, you go under it.
Or Buck Hollow.
And if you're...
Buck Hollow, for sure.
Yeah, and then you, Buck Hollow's on the other side of the road to 11, but if you're at some of the overlooks, like the tunnel overlooking, you can look down and you can see the, the right-of-way.
I think the one question that I will get a lot is, how much more capacity can be put on these? That's the only question I would get.
Okay.
You guys are putting up new poles, they're, they're trying to bring in power for data centers.
This is not a data center project.
So they'll, I will be asked...
Yeah.
They're bigger, so why can't they have more line?
Oh, they're taller, so why can't they have a 230 or a 345?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let me take that back to the project team and sort of ask whether or not it is possible to put those larger conductors on these poles, that is not the intention, that is not the purpose, right? I mean, these poles are 40 years old and need to be replaced due to a physical condition, but I understand the sensitivity, so let me, let me ask that question.
That will be the question.
I mean, the, the poles are designed and engineered for 138 KV conductors, i- is the, is the, sort of the basic answer.
Right, if that leads to they cannot take more capacity, question solved.
Sure.
If it is, well, they could be popped up to whatever the next grade would be.
I understand the concern.
That's what people will want to know.
Yeah, I understand the concern.
What are you really trying to do? Yeah, exactly.
Replace 40-year-old poles and new conductor, 138 KV transmission. But, but, I mean, I understand the concern, right? I mean, we are also, you know, we own transmission infrastructure across our six-state footprint, right? So I am not, you know, unaware of the concerns of local communities about data centers and about economic development that communities want versus economic development that communities are not interested in seeing in their, in their parts of the world. So I'll take the question back and get you an answer.
Awesome, thank you.
You can look around this room and kind of get a feeling for how much economic development you like in Rappahannock County, Virginia, so we welcome you.
Yeah.
And your electricity, just not with a huge visual impact. How long will these be up, 80 years or 120 years?
So we asked that, did we hear back from the team about that yet? We asked that question about how long the expected life of these is, I mean, one would hope it would be at least, if not more than 40 years, right, for the existing infrastructure, right, sure.
Okay, cool.
And the lines themselves, do they get replaced at this time as well?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is, that's the increased capacity, is not because we're changing the rating of the line, it's because you're getting a new conductor versus 40-year-old conductor.
So would there be line sensing technology to, I've read where you...
Oh, SCADA sensors?
Yeah, existing, with a similar size conductor, you can do, have more efficiency because you're more carefully tracking temperature and different things.
Yeah, and you can, you can also sort of add sectionalization... Yeah, and you can also sort of add sectionalization on to be able to restore in segments if things happen. I don't know if that's the case on this line. I would expect that there's at least some additional sensor capacity, but I don't know for sure, and I'll check.
And then on either end, the documentation noted there'd be replacements at the substations with current, there's currently limitations on the equipment. And then that will be changed, I guess, to more fully take advantage of the capacity of the line where it's limited today. I didn't understand what that was getting at.
Is there a particular, I'm sorry, I want to make sure. If I don't know the answer, then I know how to ask the right question to the team.
Replace line limiting equipment within the existing Page and Sperryville substation.
Yeah, so there's probably breakers and transformers in the substation that have capacity constraints because of how old they are that would be replaced as a part of the project. I'll confirm that.
Well, listen, I'm just going to say, as a small county that sometimes has trouble getting attention from utilities with aging, with our aging infrastructure, I really appreciate the attention that you're paying to the project and your willingness to work with us. It's very edifying. We don't always experience that when there's projects afoot.
We want to be transparent and we want to make sure that we are partners with you in this community. It's a service we provide here, and we know it's important and we want to do right.
Much appreciated.
You don't happen to be in the fiber internet business?
I am not, though you will not be surprised to hear that I spend a lot of time speaking with telecommunications companies who want to attach to our poles across.
How about working with two-year colleges that are starting up an electric class?
Lyman program.
Lyman program.
So anecdotally, I can tell you, we used to have a program called PSI where we partnered with community colleges across our footprint. We have actually shifted in the last year away from that to a direct apprenticeship program at the company, where instead of having to wait that 18 months or two years to get a paycheck, those apprentices are employees of the company from day one earning a paycheck while they are doing that work.
That's appealing.
Yes.
Yeah, we think it's working very well.
Wish I could have gone to school that way.
I just put up on the screen real quick, just to circle back around. The meeting, community meeting is Thursday, November 7th, 7 to 9 at the Lou Ray Volunteer Fire Department, 1 Firehouse Lane, Lou Ray, Virginia. And this is straight out of the Rap News.
Excellent.
Really appreciate you coming in.
Our pleasure.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks for upgrading our lines.
All right.
And you are very welcome to stay for this entire meeting.
Entire meeting.
Our skyline drive is really pretty right now.
No wonder if you leave now, like.
It's just getting good.
I have a master's in public administration, or I am a little bit of a government geek, so.
You'd have to be a real geek to have it. I mean, it's going to get really exciting here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, we now move into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized when you come up. Give us your name and the district you live in.
Here come the crowds opposing the new electric infrastructure.
Great. Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. We have a couple of people online on Zoom. If anyone wishes to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom, I will close public comment. Do you have the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second.
That was Van.
I got it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I noticed that we are anticipating exceeding our contingency budget next month or advertising for a public hearing.
Not contingency, but the 1% for, yeah. And that's normal for this time of year. It's typically when the schools get to all their true-up with state and federal funding that's needed.
That's what's driving it.
Schools and then also the RCES generator project and the LicePACs project. You previously approved pieces of those projects in anticipation of budgeting the full project in December, but only after this public hearing, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving into appointments.
Yes, I believe the board is aware that you have one of your positions on the building, Local Board of Building Appeals, that will come due at the end of December. Mr. Norman Smith has agreed to serve again, has submitted an application to do that, which is attached.
I will make a motion to move to appoint Mr. Norman Smith to serve on the Local Board of Building Appeals with the terms starting on January 1st, 2025, ending on December 31st, 2028, and waive any informalities with the appointment process.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to thank Norman for being on the board and for submitting a reapplication.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
It's very good that this body has not had to meet, which means the building office and building officials being fair.
Encompass.
Encompass Community Sports, formerly known as RRCS. Mr. Case DeTeel took over a partial term that Eve Brooks resigned. And so he's coming to the end of that partial term. And he has submitted an application to be reappointed to his first full term, which is a three-year term. His application is also attached.
Well, if the board is of a mind to go ahead and reappoint Mr. DeTeel today, I'll go ahead and move that we do so with this term to end December 31st, 2027.
And the fact that he's not here, it'd be wonderful if you just.
I should waive all the informalities associated with this reappointment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All joking aside, though, what does that phrasing actually mean?
You're waiving informalities with the appointment process.
Wouldn't you be waiving formalities?
You're waiving the fact that you didn't follow your process.
Like we were being informal about it by not adhering to the full process, so we're waiving that informality.
Although I leave the motions up to you all.
I usually wave formalities and informalities. Happy to restate my motion.
No, it's fine. I just, you know.
This does come up on our.
I do like English.
Well, I are an engineer.
I ain't good at it, obviously. But I never can quite grasp that phrasing. But okay, he's reappointed.
Yes.
I am with you.
I don't think it'll be a point of contention. At least I hope not.
You can do, I don't make any motions, quite frankly, so you can say any words you want.
Okay. It's fine.
Library Board.
The Library Board, as you're aware, has eight members plus the local county government representative, which is Bonnie. Of those eight members, four terms are coming up at the end of December, which really is not a great situation. They should be staggered. Of those four individuals serving those terms, three have applied for reappointment. In order to perfect the staggering, the best way to do that would be to make two appointments for four years, one appointment for two years, and one appointment for one year. And you would be all set with two per year going forward, not considering the local government position. That said, of those interested in reappointment, Ms. Patty Peterson has requested or applied for a four-year term. Ms. Johnston, Kit Johnston, and Randy Schumate have both indicated they would love a two-year term. It was, would be my wish that one of them, if the board is of mind to appoint them, one of them be appointed to a two-year term and one be appointed to a one-year term. Beyond reappointment, Ms. Disarno has requested not to be reappointed. So thank you for her service. You have received an application from Ms. Conley for the vacancy, for the other seat, Ms. Disarno's seat, which could be a four-year term if the board is of a mind to appoint her. She is in DC today and could not be here. All of these are for the terms that end at the end of December. So really, we're trying to get ahead of this, but everybody fell in line very quickly with their applications.
Okay, so two of the appointees will be for four-year terms. So I'll go ahead and move that we appoint Ms. Peterson and Ms. Conley for terms ending in December 31st, 2028. Ms. Schumate for a term ending in December 31st, 2025, is that right? And Ms. Johnston for a term ending in December 31st, 2026.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If everyone's okay with that, I am. I do know this body struggles with representatives from Jackson District.
Yeah.
And to only put that, I mean, if she's only asked for two years, I guess that is what it is. But it seems like we have a, and that's not the district that I represent, but I do think a healthy balance on the boards is important.
The old of the currently appointed members were presented with the combinations that were available, the four, two, one. And they came forward with their request. So Kit, I think, wanted to sign back up, but maybe not for four years.
Okay, and I think, yeah.
I'm aware of that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Excellent. To get all that taken care of.
Yes.
Thanks for organizing.
I'm sure there will be nothing to do in December.
Appointment-wise, I don't think you will, but it'll take the load off in January when you're doing all of the other appointments.
Right. County construction and renovation projects.
Give a quick rundown. We are in a waiting mode for the historical building envelope project, waiting on DHR and their grant program. So the grant was submitted as a chair for the board for $1 million to match your $1 million. And we're hopeful that you have a very compelling project with a very compelling match. Their website indicates that we should hear about the grantees in late 2024. As you're aware, Gloveen Homes is working on that project, and the POC meeting's November 7th. The EMS Sheriff Garage dusted this off and have been talking with the civil engineer to get the utility connection plan going. So I should have a proposal to do that any day. I probably would have had it over the weekend, but there were some back and forth questions that were needed to be answered. The school board office generator project, you awarded that installation portion of that project today on the consent agenda. So thank you very much. That'll get going. And then the transfer switch and search protection device were delivered last week, so that's ready. The generator won't be here till mid-December, so the contractor will get started with all of the infrastructure to be ready to accept that when it shows up. So that's good. The elementary school shelter generator project, I met with REC to go over design, make sure they didn't have any issues. And just this morning, the submittal was fully approved. And so that'll allow me to actually order the equipment and start the ridiculously long lead times, which are like 50 or 60 weeks for the 350 KV generator. Long time. And then I won't bid out installation for a long time. Let's see, what else we got? County campus network infrastructure have been working with a second vendor. We toured the buildings. I received pricing from them, but there's a lot of apples and oranges happening. And so right now, I'm cutting really to the next agenda item. I'm sorting through and trying to make them all apples. So I don't really have any action items for the board on that today. Sperryville Fire Department ADA parking project, it took us forever to get concrete. We're such a tiny project. It's one truck. Finally got it in last Thursday morning. That's about as five days with a car is, makes me nervous. So it'll be a last-minute call on whether I allow cars on it or not, but it looks great. And you can walk on it, so that's good. It's not in the way of anything. I stopped by yesterday and everything was cleaned up. A local contractor, Kevin Ramey, did that and did a great job. Any questions that we have to answer?
Who is out on the grounds today, taking measurements?
Dewberry is out today. That's who I mentioned earlier to interview. And so they are, I guess, what I saw, they were taking physical dimensions of the outline of the buildings probably to calibrate their model. So they also did LiDAR imaging, so it's really pretty cool. You get a 3D image of everything out there. But they have to validate, I guess.
Which over IP, you kind of just.
Yeah, there's, I do have a lot of information that I received. It is great information. It's just not something that was ready for me to present to you for a choice or a decision. That's all I can really offer.
Commercial activity related matter.
Sure, I did meet last, I guess, last month with the general manager of the Inn at Little Washington, Ed Gannon. And I wanted to update him on a couple of things and also get an update from him. So the Inn is slated to, I think, begin its expansion project, from what I understand, possibly as soon as the spring. And so that's going to introduce a lot of construction activity into the town. I told him that I've been working with Mr. Curry to add some pavement striping around a fire hydrant down.
An interject?
Yes.
So I have communicated with VDOT late last week.
Okay.
They told me, yes, okay, just send me a land use permit application and we'll approve it.
Okay, and that's for the hydrant and for the no parking?
For the hydrant.
How about the no parking?
We'll talk about that.
Okay, so that's just, that's just down at that intersection, Main Street and Harris Hollow Road. And the one thing I wanted to make sure the public was aware of, and I think this is a really important point. The Inn's distribution center site out on 211 is now absorbing somewhere in the range of 70 truck deliveries per month that used to go to the back door of the Inn's kitchen.
Parking in the middle of Main Street.
Parking in the middle of Main Street. So that's good news. We're seeing a big reduction in big trucks blocking Main Street. However, that's, while that's headed in the right direction, one area that I think, without being too heavy-handed, needs to be managed a bit. And I received a direct constituent complaint about this is the relative human Frogger game that you play when you come that block from Harris Hollow to Warren Avenue, past the Inn, because employees are just coming in and going every which way. And they're up to now 250 employees and something in that range. And frankly, you have chefs and room attendants and everyone crisscrossing. And I received a complaint from somebody who I think very validly said, now that it's getting dark, it's really hard to see people. So whether or not a crosswalk would make any difference, I don't know. I think it's human behavior, but it does concern me. And, you know, knock on wood, nothing bad happens, but it really does concern me. And it's gotten to be much, much worse. And I know this seems like, you know, making a tiny little town more complicated than it needs to be. But let's face it, I mean, we've got a big employer with a lot of activity, a lot of visitors in town. And to that end, I also talked with Mr. Curry about trying to get more or get permanent speed signs like you all have in your districts that I don't. I think I'd like those coming in on Warren Avenue. Certainly until there's a sidewalk there, people are walking in the road to go to the post office. And the temporary one, which is awesome, and thank you to Mr. Curry and our team for doing that, out by Baldwin's Gas Station, everyone loves that. So if we could turn those to a more permanent status, the solar type, I think that would go a long way in just calming traffic. But I think we all just need to keep an eye on the situation here because I think it's pedestrian traffic, parking are going to continue to be a challenge and only get, I think, worse. parking are going to continue to be a challenge and only get, I think, worse.
It'll follow the Disney World model, underground, pop up in where you work and.
That's true.
I was thinking Skywalk, but underground is probably better.
Yeah, so I don't know. I, I, you know, I don't believe a crosswalk down there is going to make that much of a difference.
Generally, that I will allow crosswalks as long as there is a receiving logical path on either end.
Yeah.
But I suspect the town would want something that is standard. And so somebody is going to have to pay for that.
Right. Yeah. So anyway, that's on the radar.
Thank you. This is the Chester Gap Volunteer Fire Department addendum. Chief Brown could not be here today due to some family illnesses. But the attachment, I believe, tells a pretty good story of basically the paramedics. Through feedback from Mr. Stevens and others, the paramedics at Chester Gap were not being paid the same as the other paramedics that we pay in the county. And due to basically the need for BLS individuals, the hourly rate, he's looking for an increase for them as well. He did remind me that to make up a medic crew, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren requires on an ambulance, an EMT and a paramedic. So they have to have both to make up a medic crew and have been doing that successfully. So the addendum is there for everyone to see. And then in January, I have asked Mr. Curry and Chief Brown that we begin our negotiation with Warren County to make sure all of this is taken into consideration.
Yeah. And that's contemplated in your full year agreement that in January 2025, or thereabout, we're going to start talking about this the next year.
I think my biggest, my, my biggest concern about not doing this now is that we will continue to have a system in which different people operating in the same roles and are paid, the paid portion of our system will be receiving different compensation. And from a morale and just fairness and equity perspective, I think that, that's a key point that needs to be addressed. If you're, if you're a paid provider in our system, you should be treated the same as the other paid providers in our system, all receiving the same compensation. To me, that's a simple takeaway here. And I, I hope that we can use the renewal of the Warren County, whatever memorandum of understanding or agreement to make sure that they, they pay their fair share. But in the meantime, I think we have to do what's right here.
Thank you.
I just wonder, are there any improvements with the volunteerism up there? Or do they have people joining or anything like, like that? I mean, this was, started under COVID and I think everyone sort of thought this would be temporary. And it's proving to be not so temporary.
After the first year of COVID and they lost five or six EMTs.
Sure.
I think that's when I saw that, I didn't think it would be temporary. I know they continue to try, but Chester Gap is a different community. People go to work early and come home late and they do that at least five days a week. And so volunteerism up there has, according to Chief Brown, really gone down worse than he's ever seen it in his time up there. I know they had an individual who went through the same EMT course I did, and he is a volunteer there. He is trying to go through the precepting and, and get released so he can run calls up there. But they're primarily running their EMS side of things with paid staff. They do have several firefighters that are volunteers. It's the EMS side that's paid.
Well, and I, I know that, you know, these are systemic challenges, but the idea was always in, or the idea you hear circulated in the county is that the more populated areas should be able to field volunteers. But arguably Chester Gap is the most populated area of the county, certainly with the most families and young children because of the number of school buses that serve that area. We know just that there are a lot of younger people and maybe through the outreach at the schools, they'll be able to draw some youth in.
Yeah.
And just, you know, walking two steps and they're on the Warren County side of things. And there are quite a few housing developments in that area. So he's got thousands of people that I think he can run calls towards pretty quickly.
I think it's important to be consistent. I also think it's equally important to be strategic. So I, I really do appreciate that we're going to look at the MOA and after the first of the year. Cause I, I think Warren County needs to, to open up their pocketbooks.
Agreed.
Yep, I agree. And I think the first step in the right direction to get that done is for us to take care of our people. So I'm going to move to authorize the chair to execute, provide a addendum to the previously executed memorandum of agreement for support for the Chester Gap Volunteer Fire Department authorizing increased funding to support increased rates and pay for BLS and ALS providers after review and approval as the legal form by the county attorney.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. The only thing I would like to add is that I really appreciate the hours that Chief Brown puts in to schedule everyone. And, you know, being able to keep that full time, most every day at a medic level. They do have a few days where every random, you know, month they'll have a basic, but they're working hard up there and doing a very good job. And excited to get the new life pack training.
So we might have to wrap something into the public hearing next month to follow your agreement decision up with the right number of dollars.
Okay.
No, Mike, we will.
Yes, we will.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Fire levy board necessity, Mr. Woodson?
Yeah, I, and this is mainly because I unfortunately couldn't be here at the last meeting. So if you would indulge me, I just wanted to hear from fellow board members where this discussion ended up. It was, is something I had raised as an idea for improving efficiency and budgeting and kind of taking out of what I think has become a somewhat unnecessary layer of review that certain chiefs have felt was an added burden to their already busy schedules to attend the meetings. So I don't know if, if anyone just wants to share with me where this ended up.
Well, at the fire levy board, we, I don't, I can't remember if we discussed it and I, and maybe, maybe we haven't, but there was feedback that folks thought it was useful, though the meetings could be maybe more efficient. In the sense that, you know, the chiefs are showing up with these stacks of binders with receipts and perhaps there could be a way of structuring it where everybody doesn't have to sit there the whole time and it could just move a little bit more efficiently. But I think that generally people thought that having another set of eyes on it was useful. But as we move through, having been in a place where all the information was much more scattered and because of county staff efforts and otherwise, now it's in a, in a pretty sleek format where the public can access it online and folks can see it all in the same format. That has really kind of focused the discussion. And one of the important things that, and I, and I know there's separate issues was about the capital dollar that we had a discussion about. And so I, I feel like folks on the board at least thought that it was useful for the discussion and for transparency.
Okay.
That said, I told them that I would just, we could have a discussion here and then I'd go back and we can continue the discussion. But, I mean, I generally think that these kinds of discussions are good because we can help to trim the fat and we can, in the sense that sometimes we don't need chief sitting there for three hours.
Correct.
And so how can we do that? You know, that if they can come in and Ms. Smith brought this up, you know, maybe there's a way of scheduling. That just works a little bit.
Half hour slots, maybe something along those lines, 20 minute slots. With the understanding you might jog up or jog back a little bit depending on how the one in front of you went. And, you know, certainly we understand that a chief might not want to sit there for three hours for the entire meeting. But if you, we can do it in a scheduled way or, or if the body can do it in a scheduled way and make it more efficient, I think we should look at, at ways to maybe gain that.
Yeah. And I think the one, one reason I started thinking, do we really need this added layer of bureaucracy? I know that, I joined Mr. Stevens for a meeting of the, the chiefs not too long ago. And as part of that, Ms. Jewel gathered for me our county direct expenditures to fire and rescue companies made in the form of operating expense reimbursements. And it occurred to me, and it's, you know, my fault, I suppose, but it occurred to me that, at least in my case, I didn't have as strong of a handle on, on the details and the details of the money, the taxpayer dollars that are flowing to the volunteer fire and rescue companies, either individually or in the aggregate. And that led me to thinking, to the extent that this is a big ticket item to the tune of, I think, in the last fiscal year was about a million and a half dollars in directory reimbursements to our fire and rescue companies. I thought, you know, I can't think of many other million and a half dollar items in our budget that we are not providing oversight for directly, which is why I thought bringing it into the board's fold, given its significance in the, in, in our budget, might make sense. So I was looking at it from a, from an efficiency and transparency of budgeting perspective more than anything. But I'm also not going to, you know, well, what I'm going to do is take the path of least resistance on this front. So I, I kind of know that I'm in the minority and I, I will stand down.
I think that there probably is a way on the efficiency side to, to allow, the fire levy board procedures require the package to be released two weeks before the fire levy board meeting. And there's probably a way to modify those to basically say, raise your hand if you have any questions for a chief and then submit them. And if there aren't any questions, then don't call us, we'll call you sort of.
Almost like a consent agenda. You've got all of the list. You don't have anything to worry about, just to prove it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be interesting to get more in-depth information on all of the different avenues we fund fire and rescue for the next budget cycle. Because I know it does get scattered throughout the budget.
Yep.
And to draw that into a, one concise place for reference would, would be helpful, I think. And it is a growing concern going forward.
I also made a note that it probably makes sense to just include as a report on the board's agenda, what was approved by the fire levy board, even though it, the endpoint is your budgeting process. It's worthwhile for that next meeting, just have the report, have, have that information available. So it's a little bit more accessible for board members and the public.
Yeah, that's good.
Give us an idea. Also, there's certain items like the turnout gear and stuff that is going up so much in price that it would at least give us an idea of where we're headed. I mean, we know the equipment is crazy, but, I mean, boots are, it's just amazing, obviously for safety purposes, but it's a lot more than they used to be.
And to that end, the chair needs to set a meeting for the fire levy board to consider the capital threshold. And I haven't heard when that's going to be, but that'll eventually come back to the board for approval, consideration.
All right. Thank you for indulging me.
Good discussion. Thank you. Rapid and Rapid and Region Legislative Program.
The board talked about this briefly at your last meeting. Since that time, the Regional Commission took it up at their meeting and approved the version that's attached. There are a few slight changes from what was presented last time. The big takeaway for us is that the region has agreed to support our push for school funding. And there's really not a ton else in there that is very critical to us, but it's critical to our neighbors and we have an opportunity to support their interests.
Do you need?
If the board wants to endorse this, you can take a vote to do that. If you don't want to do that, that's okay too. Both will probably have the same exact outcome in the.
All right. If there's no motion, we'll move into Board Committee Reports. Let's start with, we just went to Fire Levy Board, so we can go to Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, Matt, we heard a couple of interesting applications, which of course will come to you all next month. We heard two tourist homes. The transient lodging discussion continued, which you all, we'll get an update on that this evening. And then the contractors yard, we're going to have a public hearing later this month on the contractors yard language. Just to, to give you a preview on the transient lodging, that everything that we're contemplating is mostly in response to the tourism eco village application that was in conservation, didn't have really, I think, 10 foot setbacks for what was, seemed like somebody left a zero off when they adopted the ordinance last time. There were some inconsistencies that we're trying to square up. It's not a total rewrite. It's just trying to, to, to make some small changes based on the feedback, in particular, we received with that application.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, we're meeting in December?
December Tuesday after the Monday meeting, whatever that is.
December, you said Tuesday after third. At six o'clock. Okay. The Recreational Facilities Authority, did you guys meet?
They had a fodder stack meeting, excuse me. I was not able to attend, but I think that they got together and talked about the fodder stack. And the, the lowest trail has been rerouted away from the road and shoreline. That's done.
Oh, good, good, good.
I haven't had a chance to walk it yet, but I've been told that.
That was collapsing.
All right.
Was that from the, it couldn't have been from the hurricane, it was collapsing.
Years.
Yeah, just erosion.
It's wild to think it's been so dry.
What was it?
But it's been that way, though. Trail was really close to the edge of the Rush River Bank. And, you know, it's just, I think the trail was just kind of put there and it has been slowly moving back. I think a tree fell at some point years ago and then it kind of pulled some of the bank.
25 years ago, it might have been five feet away.
That's what I'm remembering, Gary.
Yeah, exactly.
Great. Let's go to Treasurer's Report, anything, let's see, cash flow is always a good one.
As we've been telling you, we're, you're investing some of your cash into projects and we're seeing that by not accumulating extra cash. But you're in great position. The flatness of this curve for the first few months suggests that the tax bills got out. People are actually paying them before the December 5th deadline.
Tax meals and lodging, that's good.
I don't know. Not sure if this is the clean end of the quarter, but I don't know if there's new news or, no, this is not a full quarter, so.
Nope.
Right?
Yep.
Cause it lags. It'll be due on the 20th.
It'll be due on the 20th of October, so that isn't good.
Ooh. We'll double check that. Big drop, it is.
Double checking. Anything else you want to look at? No? Okay. We have the Circuit Clerk's Report.
Yeah. All that is in the Treasurer's Report, just displayed differently.
Review of Legal Matters. Anything new? No.
We're waiting at Supreme Court for the Williams case. Hard to say when that will happen, maybe February. The other Flint Hill case is really just a placeholder, has never been served. The other Flint Hill case is really just a placeholder, it's never been served. The tourist home case, we're waiting on the federal court to make a ruling. And Harmony Manor, I did reach out to Jeremy and Blair to get an update and I didn't hear back from them, so. Somebody needs to set a hearing date for that one, I don't think it's happened yet.
Anything in VDOT we need to look at?
No.
We'll be back working in Sperryville later this week, I think the evening of the 6th. They have work scheduled down there, which I'm hoping means that they've got a paving crew lined up to complete that work.
I presume they're going to mill the existing roadway down to the elevation of the new inlet and then pave.
Okay.
I've not gotten that confirmation.
I wanted to mention something about Sperryville and crazy truck traffic that I've noticed recently. I don't know if you have all noticed this, but it seems, it must be a Culpeper Walmart supply change, supply chain change. Because I can't tell you the number of times that I've been at the, at the main intersection there in Sperryville where multiple full-size Walmart 18-wheelers are making that turn. And I can't, I don't know that we would have any success in talking to somebody, but it just seems there's gotta be a better way to get from point A to point B than through Sperryville, Virginia.
Wonder where their distribution of Frederick County or something?
Something's changed, because I've been really noticing an uptick in those, in their specifically Walmart trucks, full-size ones. And when you see them go around that corner, it's.
At least their GPS appears to be updated, so they're going the right way and not.
I just breathe aside, they're not heading for the bridge.
That's true.
So one, one morning I was leaving and there was a Target truck that had come off of 211 and was looking to make a left, and there was a Walmart truck looking to make a right. So they were, and they had their windows down, talking to each other about how they were gonna do it. So it is, it's a tight, older village, then roadways are narrow, the homes are close to the road. To build a truck route is tens of millions of dollars. And that opportunity passed us by years ago. So it is challenging and I, I am grateful that, you know, so many of the drivers do seem to get good instruction and that we do respond when there is an issue and try to get the GPS corrected so that Western in particular have been sending driver after driver at the bridge at the far end of town. Do we want to approach companies and ask them to avoid the county? I, I don't know that there's a way to keep up with that.
Yeah, I mean, the only other real route would be, what, 229 to 211?
That's what I was thinking, but if they're then going to 522 north.
Right.
I'm sure we would never be able to compel them to go that way. But at the same time, it's not, it would be better for ours sake.
I did want to touch real quickly on Emergency Services, the, the whole pharmacy stuff that you've been hearing about. There's a lot going on in the state. Will it be delayed? Has it been, is everybody gonna participate in a delay till April? And the answer to that is, stay tuned.
Yes.
Darren is positioning us with his partners to be ready to go.
Do we have any revised VDOT numbers or recent VDOT numbers on traffic on that corner in Sperryville? Because last, last report I remember, trucks were down. But that was probably three years ago.
Yeah, I'll pull the latest regular data to see what they have.
All right, moving into matters presented by the board. Ms. Comer?
I don't think I have anything.
Ms. Smith?
Well, after a few years of seemingly successfully navigating the leaf looker traffic through the Thornton Gap entrance and encouraging everyone to stay to the right, we hit a major speed bump this year and they took up both lanes. So that's a problem for any number of reasons. I always hear from folks that are trying to run errands and have local traffic needs over in Page County. And I have to say, I didn't think our response from the park was particularly heartening this time, which is, rules change too, because they have always reached out immediately to ask what they can do to help improve it. So I, I hope we will continue to work to establish a working relationship with the new superintendent. As he, he just came in, what, October 6th?
Yeah, and I don't think he's here though.
So, I mean, I, it's, it's tough.
How did, how, how did that happen in the past that traffic stayed to the right?
And, and VDOT did their part. VDOT positioned a sign on the shoulder of the road for SMP traffic to stay to the right. And it's worked really well the last couple of years for whatever this reason this year. And, you know, in the past, whenever we'd call for anything, they'd be like, oh yeah, we, we can send somebody down to take a look at that or take care of that or get during COVID, get this, you know, sometimes boulders or cones or whatever. Not a great response this year.
Did ask whether they would be willing to sit down with us after the fact, when it's fresh in their minds, to begin planning and after action with us, long portion of VDOT, them. And they were willing to do that, so in a couple months.
Cars were all the way down.
It, it really is a public safety concern. I'm so glad for the tourism, I'm so glad for local businesses, it's very successful time of year. From a public safety concern, it is a nightmare.
And slow down traffic.
If you all could take it up at the Public Safety Committee, that would be much appreciated. That's probably a good place for all of those bodies to intersect. I, I mean, I, I think it's, you always bite your tongue when you say this. I don't think there were large numbers, there might have been a few small incidents on the mountain this year, but there have not been the large-scale calls, especially motorcycle-related usually, that we've experienced in years past. And we really do need to just be aware of this and, and hopefully this is just a temporary situation and, and the park will work with us to continue to have a successful relationship and be able to resolve this problem in the future.
It was shocking, I mean, I couldn't, I was like, what are all those cars that are backed up in Sperryville? And all of a sudden I connected the dots.
Well, and, and then, you know, they sent someone to do social media, media coverage. Park sent someone to do social media coverage, but, but not to do scene management. That's, that's disheartening. Because it's a problem. It doesn't just need, it doesn't just need coverage, it requires resolution.
Right.
And I, I understand Mr. Curry reached out to the Sheriff's Department and it's just. Has this been every weekend? It was in particular last weekend. And that was peak?
Week, a week before, like, yes, two days ago.
Yeah. A week before, two days ago?
Warren County had put out a post to please be patient, it was gonna be bumper to bumper, so.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the social media post. That, you know, to allow extra time.
Yeah.
So, you know, and some years are different than others, maybe there's an extraordinary number of people coming out this year. I guess maybe we'll see it in meals and lodging tax and that will be nice.
There you go.
But it is a dangerous situation and, and hopefully we can impress upon everyone how important it is to build relationships for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitson?
I have nothing.
Mr. Carney?
I don't have anything.
I just have to say that I got to participate in the Rat Cats fundraiser last night, which is really one of the most bizarre things I think I've.
It must have gone while you still have your hair.
I did, but it's really clean because an egg got pushed right on it yesterday.
I saw your social media posts and I have to say, I, I couldn't even decipher what, what you were doing.
What's going on? Yes, they raised a considerable amount of money, over 18,000 as of last night, and it continues to grow. So it was very successful, but wow, that was odd.
Cats have been in the news lately.
I took, missed it.
Yep, all right. It was fun. Well, I did say at the end of it, I'm like, okay, Rawls next, because that was, wow, how successful. All right, we can recess now until 7:00 PM. Thank you, this never happens.